Good evening. My name is Sandra Fritz. I'm the chairperson of the Shrewsbury School Committee. Welcome to our meeting of August 26th. Tonight's meeting is broadcast live on Selco Channels 29 and 329, and it's streamed live on Shrewsbury Media Connections website. I'd like to thank Executive Director Mark Sauer and IT Director Brian LaRue for helping us with our meetings each night, each evening, I should say. First on the agenda is public participation. No one has asked to address the committee this evening, but if anybody wishes to do so in the future, please email the committee@schoolcommittee@shrewsbury.k12.ma.us. Next is Chairperson and Members' Report. Anyone have anything this evening? Nothing? Thank you. Next is Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Ms. Fritz. Just a couple of things I want to mention that may have gotten lost over the last couple of weeks relative to some of the work we're doing and reporting on. First off, I know that we discussed this, and Ms. Fritz made remarks at town meeting about this topic. But for those who may tune into this particular meeting, I'm not sure if I've articulated this specifically, but I wanted to again thank the members of the Shrewsbury Education Association, Unit A. They came to an agreement with the school committee that was finalized just prior to town meeting a few weeks back to defer there any compensation increases for half of this school year. By making that shared sacrifice, that is going to, or that did reduce our budget gap by a little over $1 million, which is hugely important because otherwise we would have been faced with the even more difficult scenario of needing to potentially make staffing decreases while we were entering the school year. So their shared sacrifice preserved their colleagues' jobs to whatever extent and helped us close a gap. You may recall that the state funding came in at about $1 million better than what the town manager had estimated. He had estimated some significant reductions just to be safe. Thankfully, the state came through and level-funded Chapter 70, school funding for this year. And the combination of those two things took what was a looming $2 million budget gap and closed it to start the school year. That's not to say that we don't have some challenging situations ahead of us, and I'll speak to that more when we do our update shortly. But again, I wanted to just make sure that those who tune into school committee meetings are aware of and recognize that the teachers' union members did make the shared sacrifice of deferring their compensation for half a year that again will reduce the district's cost by over $1 million. And that's something that is, I think, important to note. Couple of the thank yous I want to make here during this portion, I also want to thank our Public Buildings Division of the Department of Public Works, and they have been doing an incredible amount of work to help ensure that our ventilation systems are on target to start the school year. I want to thank in particular Keith Baldinger, who heads that division, who's been working with a third-party outside engineering firms to do total reviews of all of our ventilation systems. Those are, I believe, we have two more schools that will be done tomorrow that will finalize all nine schools. There'll be a report made by that third party. It might actually be two third parties who've worked on different schools with expertise who will report out what their findings are, will make that report public. And they're also making, you know, nothing in terms of any major issues at this point. The schools that have been assessed, there've been some minor repairs that have been needed, and the Public Buildings Division has been making sure that those are happening along the way as we go because we know that's a really key, important issue for the, making sure that our staff and our families and students understand that we are meeting the expectations for the ventilation and the air turnover in those buildings. So I still want to thank Angela Snell from Department of Public Works and Buildings and Keith Baldinger. In addition to that, I also want to thank, in particular, all of our folks we're working with in terms of the leadership team who have been, and the school committee who have been just working a really, what would be under any other circumstances, just a ridiculous amount of hours over the past few weeks. And I know that the team, the members of the team are working incredibly hard to try to make things work for reopening. There is, I want to single out one person in particular, Noel Freeman, who's the Director of School Nursing. There was a lot on her shoulders relative to, issues relative to getting ready for training around health and safety that we'll be providing to our staff next week. As a reminder, we postponed the first day of school for students to Tuesday, September 15th. Our staff will return on August 31st, on Monday, and that will be devoted to training around health and safety. And Noel has just taken, really, an incredible, has taken on an incredible amount of work this summer. She's doing it gracefully, thoughtfully, and she has incredible expertise, and we're extremely fortunate to have her working in that role. And it gives me a high degree of confidence that we're making good decisions about how we can move forward with the programming that we have on tap. So those are some thank yous I wanted to put out there during the Superintendent's Report, and look forward to providing a more update about reopening when we get to that portion of the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. Next on the agenda, we will have an update on our reopening plan for the 2020-2021 school year, and Dr. Sawyer and the District Administrators will provide that.
Okay, let's move back on quickly here. I'll make sure that we have slides up. So it has been, again, an enormous amount of work that's been going on in order to try to make things work as we go forward into the new school year. I'll just begin with the three key messages that we've been talking about each time we present, that the health and well-being of students, families, and staff is priority number one for us. Our focus for this coming year is to create safe school environments for both our students and our staff with the priority in everyone's well-being, and also enabling, of course, high levels of learning, which is why our organization exists primarily. We're planning based on guidance from not only the Mass Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, but also medical experts, public health experts. We're closely monitoring the latest information and data, which I'll share some of that in a moment regarding the pandemic in Massachusetts and in Shrewsbury. And I was pleased, this is the, every Wednesday, the new state report comes out. This first slide that's up now actually is the Johns Hopkins University Coronavirus Resource Center that does a seven-day positivity rate comparing states against the 5% benchmark that the World Health Organization has set for reopening of various elements of society, including schools. You can see Massachusetts remains well below 5%, at a 2.05%. It's just a tick down, I believe, from last week's at this time. So it's good news that Massachusetts is holding steady well below that 5% threshold. If you go to the next slide, this is the information that was just released this afternoon at about 4:00, I believe. You'll see that Shrewsbury remains a community that is shaded green per this statistic that the Commonwealth of Massachusetts is focusing on, which is the number of cases per 100,000 people over 14 days. That statistic for Shrewsbury is now 1.3. And if you look over to the left there, you can see that the case count, the actual case count for the last 14 days in Shrewsbury was seven. That's a very low number that's moving in the right direction. Obviously, that averages out to half a case a day. And of course, the number with 100,000, 1.3, is a, you know, larger than that because Shrewsbury, of course, does not have 100,000 residents. We're at about 38,000 or so residents. But when you, you know, take seven cases over the last 14 days, and if you divide that by 38,000, you get a pretty small percentage of people who have tested positive over the last two weeks, and somewhere probably in the 10,000th place, I would imagine, when you do that division. So again, it's good news for our community that the case number is very small right now, and that's encouraging based on, you know, trying to go into a school year where we're trying to minimize, obviously, the risk of any additional spread. The next slide is a, the 14-day positive test rate. You can see this is also trending in a very good direction for Shrewsbury. Three weeks ago, 1.23%, dropped by about a quarter to 1%. Then it dropped another quarter approximately to 0.72%, and almost another quarter this week to 0.56%. So again, this is one of the key metrics that we've been asked to track when we're thinking about reopening schools. And once schools are open, we'll continue to be tracking these very closely to determine if we may continue or if there's any issues on these public health metrics where we might be, need to make a decision to move into an all-remote situation. But with numbers like this, we're in a much better situation, of course, much better situation than we were last spring, and it meets the benchmarks that experts indicate are, have the right amount or acceptable level of risk for reopening various elements of society, including schools. Okay, the next slide is an update on the choices families have made in Shrewsbury relative to the all-remote program or the hybrid program. And you'll see that in the sort of reddish shaded area, you see the number and percentage for each school who chose. This is a, this is, these are statistics that were just from about, I don't know, 5:00 this afternoon when I took this out of Power School. And in the blue shaded, it's the people who chose hybrid and the percentage. They've stayed pretty steady compared to what we presented to you a week ago. The, what we did do with those families who did not respond by the deadline, we gave them a few extra days, and then we inserted them into the hybrid program. So if a family did not make a choice for some reason, we've, we've scheduled them in the hybrid program because it's obviously easier for us to figure out the scheduling needing, because we have to have physical space for all those kids, and then remove them than it would be to try to insert them later on. We'll talk a little bit more about families having the option the rest of this week to change their choice if they'd like. This will be their last opportunity to change before the new school year starts by the end of this week, and we'll give detailed information about that at the end of the presentation. But this, these percentages and these numbers are really posing a significant challenge to us as a school district. If you just look at the number of all-remote students totaling almost 1,900 students, that's larger than a lot of school districts around here, and that's just our remote students. Whereas we have a pretty good-sized school district for central Massachusetts in terms of 4,179 in hybrid. That would be, you know, larger than most school districts in central Massachusetts and even across the state for suburban communities. What is really becoming an issue is, and if you go to the next slide, it's staffing challenges. Because essentially, the way this is broken out is this has created issues for us in terms of staffing efficiency. You can imagine that an elementary classroom, that may be, let's say, a fourth-grade classroom at one of our elementary schools that had the, somewhere in the range of typically, say, 24 students, which is the upper end of the school committee guidelines for class size. A lot of our fourth grades probably be right around 23, 24 students. And if you take those 24 students and you take essentially 30% of them, and they become remote students, and the students who remain behind, let's say there are about 14 kids or so, and there were maybe, you know, maybe 15, 16 kids, split into two groups of eight in cohorts B and C, and those other students end up in the pool of students who are all remote. What we're ending up with is across all the different class sections that have to be, that have to be created, the class sizes essentially are smaller, which on one hand is a good thing. But when you do that over, you know, five different elementary schools, you end up with needing more teachers in order to, if you don't have that efficiency of being able to plan for classes to have up to more of the range of the school committee guidelines of 22 to 24 for the upper elementary grades or 20 to 22 for primary grades. And this is right now. We are looking at meeting likely to hire as many as, as many as six elementary teachers just to make this work. We're going to be looking at, you know, what our options are in terms of shifting funds from elsewhere in order to make that happen because obviously the budget is tight. And again, if it weren't for the fact that we're able to close that gap through the combination of the concessions and taking less compensation by the teachers' union and additional state funding, we would be in a world of hurt right now. We do have some money that we can use for COVID expenses. It's helping us with some of that planning. But when we're talking about staffing for the whole year, the majority of that COVID funding is only available through the end of December. This becomes even more challenging at the high school level, and we'll speak to that more specifically and later in the presentation. But it's a, that lack of efficiency is creating some real obstacles for us, and obviously with school scheduled to open, you know, we are scrambling in a variety of ways trying to make this work. Other districts that have had fewer percentages of families choose all-remote, it's a little bit easier to deal with those numbers, but that's just a reality that we're dealing with right now, and those are options the state has mandated that we have to provide. So the next slide, there's a few key points I'd like to make, and then I'll turn it over to Ms. Clouter. Some key information regarding our preschool through grade eight. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has advocated that districts really prioritize in-person learning for preschool-age students, which is what we're trying to do. In order to do that with the staffing that we do have, we would need to, and this is not a formal recommendation yet tonight, but I believe in the next week we'll be probably making this recommendation in terms of our planning, that we will not provide all-remote learning to preschool families who have students without disabilities. If we have a student who from age three up and they have a disability of a level that qualifies for preschool programming, we're obligated by law to provide them with educational services. If a family with a student with a disability at the preschool age makes their choice, which they have an option to make a choice to do all-remote, we will need to provide remote services to those preschool students with disabilities. We are not, however, legally obligated to provide remote services to preschool students without disabilities. And in terms of just the staffing we have available in order to prioritize and having the students who are choosing the hybrid to have them be able to, with social, with physical distancing, receive services, that is a key decision that we need to make, and I would say we're about 90% of the way there to saying that's the direction we'll need to go. As far as grades kindergarten through grade eight, based on the numbers and how it breaks down, again, not practically efficiently, but we will have the ability to use existing Shrewsbury Public Schools staff. Aside from, you know, whether we may have long-term subs for, you know, someone who's on maternity leave as like would happen in a normal year, we will have some situations where, you know, we have some different accommodations for staff who may have medical issues and so on relative to the pandemic. But we will be able to provide Shrewsbury Public Schools educators to teach the students who are in Cohort D, the all-remote cohort, in grades K through eight. At the K through four elementary level, it would essentially work that there will be, if you're going to be a hybrid student and you're going to physically go to school, you will be assigned a teacher, and you would, you would attend school in the days designated by your last name. And that teaches, the teacher would be the teacher of record and would be communicating with families, grading the students on their report card. The homeroom elementary teacher, of course, there's going to be lots of other teachers and specialists who interact with students for special subjects if they have special education needs, et cetera. But, you know, in elementary typically you have that one classroom teacher who's responsible. For the students who are remote at the elementary level, they will have, a Shrewsbury teacher will have a class cohort of students who are remote. Those numbers will likely be a little bit larger than if a class was in school. Again, that's part of that efficiency piece, but we can only do that to a certain point in order to make sure that it's workable for the, for the class and the teacher. So it may be a little higher class size than what you'd see in a physical class, but still within a reasonable number for that level. And they will be teaching those students in a mix each day of some live interactions with students via Zoom or, and also there'll be some opportunities for those students to do some asynchronous learning as well, but there'll be a very significant proportion, much more than last spring, of live interaction with a teacher. At the Sherwood and the Oak Middle School level, there will be physical, you know, teams that are coming in. We know that we have interdisciplinary teams, and those aren't familiar with our middle school model. At Sherwood, you have two teacher teams, where one teacher teaches English Language Arts and Social Studies, the other teaches Math and Science. There are special educators associated with teams as well. And then at the Oak level, there are four teachers in the team for the subjects. They're split out by English Language Arts, Social Studies, Science, and Math with four different teachers for those subjects. Those would still be the, the way that we're approaching things. There will be some teams that will have the students who are physically coming to school in the hybrid model, and there will be some number of remote teams who have a team of students, which is typically around a little bit more than 50 kids at Sherwood and a little more than 100 students at Oak. Again, those numbers might be adjusted slightly for the remote piece, but that they will have, be assigned to a team in the same kind of structure. It would just be that they're connecting with them, again, roughly half and half, live interaction teaching and other asynchronous learning that's being overseen by the team, as well as things like morning meeting and team meetings and things like that that would be happening for elementary and middle school students. One wrinkle at the Oak Middle School level that we're expecting to happen, and again, we're trying to make all these schedules work right now, and we appreciate people's patience with that, is that just the way the numbers broke out with about a third of the students choosing all-remote is that we, it looks like we're going to need to have a, one of the physical teams be a mix of seventh and eighth-grade students, and one of the remote teams to also be a mix of seventh and eighth-grade students because we just didn't have the numbers breaking out evenly across those. Of course, our teachers are licensed and experienced at teaching that grade, that grade level. Sometimes we'll have teachers move between seventh and eighth grade year to different years over year, and we're very confident we'll be able to provide a good experience, but it will be a little bit different in those cases. But again, just another reality we have to deal with based on the circumstances that we have. So that is the way things will be working in terms of grades K through eight. Go to the next slide, high school. This is where we have our most complex situation. Because of the complexity, the students in Cohort D, the all-remote, which you may recall was the smallest, you know, that's a relatively smaller percentage in the sense that about 80% of our students at the high school are choosing to come in person through the hybrid model. Because that 80% of students is essentially a larger group of students compared to some of the other levels, we really can't take teachers out of the schedule to only address the needs of the remote students. We still need all the teachers in place essentially for the, let me see, about 1,500-plus students who would be in person at Shrewsbury High School and the 354 students who have chosen remote at this point. We just don't have the economies of scale to have the teachers pulled away to do both without being able to meet the class sizes and all the rest of it. There's a, Ms. Clouter will speak to this in more detail in a moment, but the, this volume is, you know, made it not possible to assign enough separate high school faculty to teach Cohort D. And we are in the midst right now, and we have been working, and the high school leadership team and Ms. Clouter have been working tirelessly on all different kinds of options to determine whether we'll be able to hire either additional teachers to serve as facilitators who would be working for Shrewsbury Public Schools for still Cohort D students who are working in a third-party online platform. That is most likely going to be a platform called Edgenuity, where they're essentially self-paced units that have a variety of instructional elements, videos, screen casts, different kinds of instructional materials that students essentially work through at their own pace, take knowledge checks and tests and quizzes and things along through the program. But there would be, you know, there's two different ways to do that. There is a teacher, a version where you can get a teacher through their program, it'd be a third-party teacher. That obviously is a more expensive option. Or potentially, you have students working through this more independently but connecting with a Shrewsbury educator or educators who are grading some of the more substantive assignments that they might be doing, whether it's a lab report or an essay, whatever it might be, and making sure that they're staying on top and moving through the course of study as expected. We have a long history of experience with virtual high school, which is, known as VHS. We have typically, you know, 25 some odd students each semester at the high school who are taking those courses. That's the approach that that's used. We've had students be very successful in that kind of program where there's someone at the high school, most recently it's been now when the Director of School Counseling, who would essentially facilitate, make sure students are getting what they need, moving through the program appropriately, and, but yet they're being instructed through this sort of asynchronous online program with a lot of rich opportunities for, for learning. Obviously, in, under a normal situation, we would not want to be splitting students off to use a third party. There's a lot of things about this that, you know, I would prefer not to have to do, but right now the numbers are requiring that. The other issue, just like hiring more teachers at the elementary level is, looks like we're something we're going to need to try to do to make this work. We would have to be hiring people or paying substantially more funding for teachers through this third-party piece. And frankly, I need to work with Mr. Collins based on just, you know, we get new information every day about how we can most effectively and most cost-effectively with resources that will be available to us, make this work. So with that, I'm going to turn it over at this point to Ms. Clouter, who will take you through a little bit more detail around what Cohort D might look like because before families, you know, they'll have an opportunity by the end of this week if they want to change their mind for the start of the school year. This will be their opportunity. But again, it's just a variety of complexities that we're trying to work through in order to serve all of our students as best we can. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Clouter.
Thanks, Dr. Sawyer. You've covered much of the broad strokes of what I'm going to share. My purpose today is to kind of help families who must be wondering because there's nothing worse than being a parent at a time like this. It's like, did I make the right decision? And can I get a better sense of what it looks like on the student experience side so that if I want to change my mind, I have time to do that by Friday? And when we're talking about the remote cohort, Brian, would you, I put this in as a placeholder as well for a couple of reasons. Dr. Sawyer spoke already to the fact that, you know, when we made our recommendation of an initial plan, it was based on the belief that it's better to have kids return to school in some capacity than not return. And I'm so happy to see the numbers trending in the right direction to support that, that thinking. The other piece is, we have an obligation to meet the needs of families that elect to keep their kids learning in a fully remote model. And, you know, in part, that's because the Department of Ass, has, you know, mandated that we meet that requirement, but also we understand that families have a variety of reasons for choosing to have their students continue to learn in a full-remote model, some of them being that they really would put their risk, their health at risk or the risk of family members. So we want to make sure that as we're thinking about the experience of students that are in Cohort D, that we're thinking of them as Shrewsbury students. And when we grounded our recommendations, they were, they were based on kind of the survey data that we had initially, which would suggest that we had between, I think it was 17% and 33%, depending on the level, families that seemed like they were going to elect to continue with remote learning. As you can see, the numbers are quite higher at some levels. And also, there's variability between, between schools at a given level. So at the elementary level, what that means for us in terms of, you know, staffing efficiency is that you might have a very small portion of your kindergarten class elect to be fully remote at one school, and we might have to form a kindergarten remote cohort across schools, which is something really unusual for us. And that's made a little bit more difficult to wrap your head around, thinking that if families elect to make a change in their choice mid-year, then what, what is that student's homeschool? So as we've worked on this, the complexity of the numbers isn't just around the implications for staffing, but also hinges on kind of what the student and family's experience will be, what it means to be connected to school. So this is where we left when we, in our plan recommendation was that we were thinking of, you know, how will we meet the needs of students in a fully standalone remote model? And there were two options that we thought about initially. One was that we'd have Shrewsbury educators teaching Shrewsbury Public Schools curriculum, and the other is that we'd have a state-contracted third-party learning option. And as Dr. Sawyer has shared, it looks like we might need different, different choices of those options at different levels. So it's a balancing act in thinking about, you know, what are our numbers across levels? And I think Dr. Sawyer articulated that really well. One of the things that's really difficult in kind of thinking about the class size is that typically we have guidelines, but there are some times where we exceed the guidelines, and if we do, we might provide that classroom additional support. Or we understand that if we're going to add another first grader, we're going to put it in a classroom where we have more room. And the constraints around social distancing means that the hybrid model really can't, can't take any more new coming students. So every time we add another student, we have to really think carefully about where that student in that section is going to go. And, and that influences kind of the staffing arrangements as well. So we might have higher caseloads for remote learners because in a sense, the space constraint is removed there. But we also want to make sure that those caseloads aren't too high because those are Shrewsbury students who are going to need feedback and regular check- because those are Shrewsbury students who are going to need feedback and regular check-ins, too. And so in some ways, some of the things that we've been doing to mitigate the higher enrollments, for example, at grade four or in the high school, are now confronted as real constraints as we, as we think about how we're going to staff the, the two models at once. So as we thought about the experience of, of students in cohort D, it's really important to think that, you know, when we put this model together, we wanted to have a, a way to connect students to the home communities. So that, for example, if you're a junior and you've elected to, to be fully remote, you still get to connect with the junior class. You still have the same options that you would be if you were applying to college, you know, from Shrewsbury High School. And so when we look at some of these constraints, it's quite painful because one issue is being played off against another. And I'll talk a little bit more about that as we look at the, at the course content piece. But we understood that regardless of whether we could go fully with a Shrewsbury-staffed option or whether we'd have to have a third-party provider, that the educators that teach students in cohort D would be different. In other words, if we're able to staff cohort D with Shrewsbury educators, there's a subset of Shrewsbury educators teaching in a hybrid model and a subset of Shrewsbury educators teaching in the standalone, fully remote model. And they're not the same. So I, I want to make sure that we mention that because families sometimes wonder, well, if I'm fully remote, can I access that Shrewsbury teacher by zooming in? And we've decided that, that, that pedagogy for that in technology is complex and we're not going to try to mix that. So the expectations are the same. The course content will be aligned to the state standards, no matter who's teaching the cohort, but the groups of educators who are instructing these two different cohorts will be different educators. And that just articulates why. So students in cohort D will be supported by different educators than the ones in the hybrid program, but in both cohorts will get timely feedback from an educator about their work. So what does that look like kind of in a daily schedule? This is an example of what that might look like at the elementary level. So if you're going through, and again, this is a mock schedule for the purposes of just grounding everybody in an example. But you'd begin your day, morning meeting with a teacher. We've tried to emphasize the importance of live synchronous time being personable and, and meaningful in terms of establishing and reinforcing community culture and individual social competency skills and also making sure that the interactions are individualized. We've all been on a big, large Zoom where it was hard to kind of focus and, and tune in. And so we've prioritized instructional time to be very tailored to the needs of specific kids. So there's a morning meeting with the teacher. The purpose of that is really grounding the class community. There'd be an asynchronous math lesson, which means that the teacher would push out a video and some activities to do. There might be some other examples or, or work prompts done in that time. Then there would be a small group math with the teacher. So that would be synchronous. Student would tune in and get what they needed as a math student based on the whole group lesson. Then there's a whole group reading lesson. Again, that's asynchronous so that the teacher can be live pulling a group of small kid, a small group of readers together at the same level with the same needs. Again, high engagement, purposeful in terms of the timing so that kids who are in-person can get exactly what they need and the asynchronous lessons could be watched and re-watched or watched at a family's convenience. And when we put the schedule together, we're thinking very purposefully about kind of what the overall instructional diet would be. What's the feedback we heard from families in terms of how to manage the amount of screen time? And, and the sets of feedback that said it was terrific to be able to watch something and it was overwhelming to have so many things to watch. So how do we balance what that looks like? We also allowed for asynchronous science or social studies lesson in a given day as well as a specialist lesson, and that would be art, music, physical education. We saw lots of examples of how our educators were really creative about connecting with kids. And then an asynchronous writing lesson as well. That's not to say that the small group reading couldn't, can, you know, include some feedback to writers about their written work. And, and so kind of when we think about reading, we think about response to reading, too. I don't want people to think it's just, has to be guided reading. But keep in mind that what we haven't put here is, you know, students are breaking for lunch. They're having a snack break. They should be moving and running outside. These are young kids who shouldn't be sitting at a computer, you know, for the whole day. Also built into the schedule are two instructional support sessions so that, you know, students can get help, what we used to call that kind of office hours, which wasn't a really good match for young children. But the idea is that we really want to make sure that people see that the amount of live instructional time in cohort D mirrors the instructional time that teachers would, would be able to provide students in the hybrid model. So there's parity there in terms of pacing, which is important because if students switch from one model to another, we want to be able to kind of seamlessly integrate that. So to sum it up, cohort D students for, in grades K to four would have a Shrewsbury Public School curriculum taught by a Shrewsbury Public School educator. And much of the content delivery would be shaped by the positive feedback we had from families. With the difference that we have now kind of a consistent learning platform already identified, which is CSOW, we have a Zoom educational platform and, and, you know, it's hard to remember that educators didn't know how to use that when we first started because it's second hat now, but I think that that's, or old hat, rather. So that, how, the feel of that will be familiar to people. What will be different is that the expectations in terms of time on learning and the expectations in terms of content mastery are going to be very different. You'll recall that in the spring, for all students, we were encouraging participation. We were following up with students, but ultimately it was a pass/fail, complete incomplete grade. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has made it quite clear that we're expected to cover all standards, that students will need to be assessed and given feedback, that we should expect mastery in covering all of the content. And so I worry about students who are still developing their organizational or executive functioning skills that are in this model, particularly students that may have been behind when school closed. So if you're a parent thinking, this is like it was in the spring, it's going to be really different from, from the way it was in the spring. There's going to be a lot more content delivery. And that's just really important for parents to consider as they decide what's going to be best for their children. So what does it look like at the middle level? At the middle level, you can see that teachers are organized in different teams. So the understanding in terms of instructional time for middle schoolers is between four to six hours a day, which includes academics as well as specialist subjects and topics like health. Dr. Sawyer described it really well, kind of what the team configurations are at the middle level. When we think about what that looks like for students in cohort D at the middle level at Sherwood, we'll have two, we have two-person teams. In other words, each teacher teaches two content areas, social studies and English Language Arts or math and science. And at Oak, each of the content areas is taught by one person. So there's a four-person team. And from a numbers perspective, principals have then decided to approach the cohort D model by thinking about students as either in a remote team or hybrid team, with the exception of what Dr. Sawyer described at Oak, where we have a teacher teaching X number of sections of remote or hybrid in order to facilitate the kind of wonky numbers that we have there. At Sherwood, we're going to have at grade five, I wrote this down, three remote teams and six hybrid teams. And at grade six, three remote teams and seven hybrid teams. Given the numbers of students electing for full remote at Oak, we're going to have three and a half in-person teams and one and a half remote teams at each grade. And so half teams will form a team with half-seventh and half-eighth. So altogether, there are ten teams at Oak. And in order to think about how to address world language and other electives that rotate, like the Design Lab, there's going to be different options depending on the student's choice. And so the Allied Arts would rotate every thirty days in a, in a different cycle. So the team's daily schedule will look different because, you know, as I said when I talked about the elementary schedule, it's a mock example. In other words, kids who are learning at home don't necessarily, if it's asynchronous, have to put math first, as it was by example, because they could really do that at their own pace. Similarly, when teams organize kind of how content is delivered, they have choices about how they arrange content areas. So this is just a sample from what, of what one team might look like that I think gives you a sense of how we would balance kind of synchronous and asynchronous, asynchronous learning. It emphasizes again the importance of kind of checking in and checking out with students each day. And again, instructional support is kind of built into the day because we do understand that students learning in this model will still need to connect with people to get feedback and support. So Chinese, Latin, and Spanish will also have to have a set period in the schedule as they're shared among a remote and an in-person team. So the complexities of some of the staffing is particularly felt when we think about people who typically can kind of go across schools and or go across cohorts of kids. But I, I think it's really remarkable how principals have managed to kind of configure what are the staffing constraints and what are the student choice constraints and how we can marry the two of them. So at the middle level, again, we'll be able to have Shrewsbury educators, Shrewsbury Public School curriculum, and the delivery would be through Schoology as it was before, and teams would continue to plan kind of consistently. So the feel of that would be familiar. Again, the expectation in terms of student workload, the ability to kind of maintain kind of a self-paced approach to getting things done, the expectation that they hand in assignments would be higher. So that's really important for families to consider, even if they have older students. Which brings us to the high school. As you know, kind of those high expectations at the high school mean that to receive full credit, students have to fully complete their courses and they have to be accountable for attendance in a way that they weren't. So one of the things we heard in the spring was that, you know, students were not necessarily tuning in on camera or it was kind of hard to tell who was there. When they offered help sessions, sometimes kids didn't self-identify as needing help and so it was kind of hard to track students that were struggling. There needs to be in place a, a kind of set attendance policy for each level, but that's going to be particularly true for the high school where we have kids essentially passing from one course to another as opposed to a model where you have a kid grounded in an A-team or in a standalone classroom. So that brings us to thinking, okay, so what would be the, the program of studies for students in cohort D? And the first thing, you know, I did with, and I give Greg Nevada and Todd Buzidlow a lot of credit, we looked at, you know, what's the course request tally for all of the kids in this cohort? What are all the things that they're taking? And then we looked at, so this is the program options for Edgenuity in terms of the course content, how well do they sync? And the good news is that there are many classes, like English One, where you can sync. The bad news is there are some remarkable electives at Shrewsbury High School that just do not translate. So the World at War, Human Anatomy, those things you won't find in an Edgenuity catalog. So similarly, although they have several AP offerings, they don't have all of the AP offerings that are available at Shrewsbury High School. So we'd need to consider roughly fifty seats worth of kids who have elected for some of the AP offerings that are not available through Edgenuity at, at a cost through VHS, with the virtual high school program that Dr. Sawyer described. And finally, we'd have to think about world language, which again, when we think about the fact that this list of students in course selections represents four grades, there are juniors here whose passion is language and some of the higher-level language classes are not available. Again, there's a way to offer higher-level language, but it would be a, a third vendor through Middlebury College that would allow kids to do that. Again, small percentage of kids, very high cost. And that starts to get at our shared value for wanting students to have really enriched, rigorous experiences and also be able to kind of think about how we're going to balance the needs of the many, given our budget situation. So we've talked about the schedule at the elementary and the middle level being a balance of synchronous and asynchronous instruction. At the high school, everything would be self-paced and it would be asynchronous. So this is kind of a sense of what a student would see if they were logged into a third-party program. You know, they get an assignment, they get warnings and alerts if they're off track. They get to see their progress through the different assignments that they'd make. A, you know, so that, I'll get to this next point, but an adult would be looking over, over their shoulder through this dashboard and saying, okay, between five and ten percent of the assignments would need to be graded. Some of them would be kind of automatically there because they build in quizzes and understanding checks. They allow retakes of quizzes with different quiz structures, which I think is impressive. They provide all sorts of guided notes and other aids, but essentially, a student would have to be able to go through that self-paced program. For some students, this might be excellent preparation for a college course. But, you know, again, I think that there's a certain student that benefits and really thrives in that environment, and it's, it's not for everybody. So if you look at the next slide, this is a, an example of kind of some guided notes that are available as kind of a support for reading more complex text. So there are some built-in helps there. You can see at the right-hand corner kind of a video clip of a teacher. So they do have licensed teachers who are preparing these lessons and delivering asynchronous content. It looks very engaging. They activate prior knowledge, they follow some good rules of pedagogy, but it wouldn't be a Shrewsbury educator delivering that content and that's really important for people to know. So students would work at their own pace. They would interact with an assigned licensed teacher to get feedback. They'd be included in activities at the high school, like the fall play and athletics. We're very cognizant of how important it would be to be able to connect to their graduating class and so we're brainstorming today about how we might set up some Schoology groups so that kids could access advisor or access class meetings in that way. And again, it's important to know that if a student has special needs and or accommodations, that those would also be supports that would be provided through this program as well as a combination of support from the high school because students, you know, who have IEPs would get their needs met in this program because they also certainly have the right to choose a full standalone remote program as their preferred learning model. So that brings me to thinking about, you know, our, our next decision, which was then, you know, the two models that Dr. Sawyer referred to. And that is, if we have a third-party program, then there's two options for that third-party program. We could hire new educators to supervise the students that are in this program and to grade the five to ten percent of the work per course that we'd need to provide. Or we could buy the model of the coursework that comes with a teacher at a cost of $250 per course, per semester, per student. We could also, of course, consider a hybrid of some paid courses and some Shrewsbury courses, but it, it, I think illustrates in a very stark way the dilemma of wanting to provide really high-quality programming, wanting to have adult oversight of students' learning experience and trying to figure out how we do that. You might wonder, okay, well, if we're going to do that, why wouldn't we have Shrewsbury High School's, you know, teachers move to teaching remote? So I asked for some examples and said, okay, so if we pull the hybrid kids, the cohort D kids out of the schedule at the high school, which, you know, again, Greg Nevada is a wizard with power school. If we do that, are there any, does that free any staff? So because class enrollments are relatively high at the high school, for English Ten, for example, there are sixty kids who are going remote. If we remove all of the cohort D kids, you'd think, okay, well, that's, you know, three sections. Maybe we could cobble together an English teacher by removing other courses. That still leaves a class size for the thirteen remaining sections of hybrid of eighteen. If we take the fourteen kids who have elected for cohort D in AP Bio, we might think, okay, well, maybe we can create a science section by collapsing another class. If we did that, we leave an average class size of seventeen for the three remaining hybrid sections. So as we start to look at the staffing efficiency question that I think Dr. Sawyer brought up, that we were kind of... up, that we were kind of playing cohorts off against one another and thinking about kind of how we're going to move that forward, it's a really difficult dilemma to wrestle with. So I wanted families to really understand kind of the ramifications of the dilemma. So people were saying, you know, I want a Shrewsbury educator. If you want a Shrewsbury educator, you need to understand that at the high school, that's not going to happen, in terms of teaching the content. If families want to change their mind and have them move from a hybrid model to remote or from remote to hybrid, families can do that. But after this Friday, there's going to be a waiting period to do that, because as you can imagine, after illustrating kind of the complexity of moving students from one thing to another, particularly at the high school, we would need to have some time to do that. And as we were talking today about the numbers of kids and the course tallies that they had, the number changed back and forth twice, to the point where it's like my number for the presentation as I was sitting down with Joe didn't match the survey data that he had, you know, updated even this morning. So people need to understand that that waiting period could be several weeks, depending on when people elect to switch and how close it is to a grading period. And so any changes to a student's program for the start of the school year need to be done by Friday, the end of this week. Families will receive an email on Thursday with final information on kind of what the cohorts splits are. I know everyone's thinking kind of where they are in the alphabet and whether they're going to be in Cohort B or C. So families will see the split by last name and get instructions on how to switch their program, either whether, you know, it's switching to hybrid or switching to remote. Changes have to be in by 3:00 PM on Friday, again, because of some of the complexities of the staffing and the student configurations, that information is really important. Due to the complexities of kind of ensuring that the student class size is balanced for physical distancing, we cannot have kids switch from B to C based on other considerations for families. So I completely understand if you've been thinking, you know, you're partnering with another family in your neighborhood and the alphabet doesn't match, could I please just switch? It seems like a simple thing. But we've really, and, you know, Karen can attest to, measured out every space to make sure we can accommodate every kid in each of those cohorts, and we really need to make sure that families understand that. So a link to an online form to make requests will be provided on Thursday as well.
As Ms. Clowder wraps up, I'm just going to ask Ms. Belzino to speak briefly to, I'm sure, families of students who have varying special education needs in terms of how that might look, especially for students in Cohort D. And so if she could speak to that, sort of summarize what that looks like, and then we'd be happy to take questions from the committee.
Sure. So I think first and foremost, thank you, Dr. Sawyer. I recognize that it's a very difficult time for families. Students with IEPs, one thing that families should definitely know, that services as specified in their IEPs will be delivered. And what we're working through right now, depending on the model that the child has chosen to participate in, the district will communicate about how and when the services will be delivered, but it will happen closer to the start of the school year. And that is seriously just because the teams are not working right now. I mean, we are working, we have a small, mighty team, and we're trying to put together additional students for Cohort A, and as soon as we can get that information out to families, we will. And I believe after tonight, we'll be very close to giving additional seats for Cohort A, and I know a lot of families were interested in knowing if that was going to be a possibility. For Cohort D students, at the elementary level, we will have special education teachers that will be responsible for their caseload, that could include Cohort D. At the middle level, same thing. What we're looking for right now, it could be a mix at the middle school level. For example, our special education teacher might have two periods of in-person services, two periods of remote services. So they're working through those schedules right now. At the high school, any child that's picked Cohort D, we will have a special education teacher, but it will not be from the online platform. So what that means, we will have to ensure that the teacher that works with those students in Cohort D at Shrewsbury High School will have to become versed in the third-party platform. From there, we'll ensure that the services are delivered. So that's our thinking right now. We have about 34, 35 students in Cohort D for Shrewsbury High School right now. We're thinking at least one special educator, possibly two, depending on the service delivery grid minutes. Is that helpful?
Thank you, Ms. Belzino. So again, this is an incredibly complex situation. I appreciate the work that everyone on the leadership team is doing and doing that in conjunction with input we've received from the reopening task force subcommittees, but we're really down to a lot of nitty-gritty pieces here, and unfortunately, there's a lot of things that really have, you know, there's no, there's no good answer, there's no easy answer, and there's not going, there's going to be people that we can't satisfy to the degree that we'd like to. I think in particular, you know, as far as Cohort D, we know families, we respect the choices families are making based on their comfort level. At the same time, there are families who are making that choice because that's really the only choice they have, based on their, you know, their doctor's recommendation because of a situation the family might have with someone who's immune-compromised, whether that's a student or a family member. And we will continue to strive, it is an imperfect situation, but we will strive to do everything we can to get these students off on the right foot to start the year, and then I'm sure as we go, continuing to develop. And particularly speaking about the high school, we can't provide, you know, Shrewsbury Public Schools educators the way we are at the K through 8 level. But it's an enormous challenge, we will do our best to meet it, and obviously, we'll do that with the best interests of our students in mind.
Great, thank you, everyone. Any questions or comments from the committee? Jason?
Just a few comments to start off with, just to thank all of our team up and down the line for all the work that you've continued to do on this. Obviously, we're seeing this plan come a long way in a very short amount of time, and I think that families watching at home might receive some comfort from the greater level of detail that we're able to start, we're starting to be able to access. Just my comments in particular, I am pleased to see that students in K through 8 who are learning remotely will be able to do so through Shrewsbury Public School staff. I do know that that was a logistics-dependent decision, and I'm pleased with the outcome there. I was also pleased and somewhat comforted myself to be able to see the sample schedule. And I would just ask and suggest that we share that out as widely as possible, because I know that that's a question a lot of families have had, based on, you know, what happened in the spring and things being sort of done on an emergency basis in the spring. I think that schedule actually made a lot of sense to me, and really, I think it helped enable me to start to see how this can be made to work. So just those are my comments, and thank you again for all your work.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just a quick question. Help me to understand how the synchronous portion of the mixed-grade remote sessions works? How does that look when they're on Zoom or whatever? You've got students in one grade and students in another grade, and they're in one group?
So I think we're only thinking about that at the middle level?
So it would be synchronized within the grade. I don't think they would be looking to mix grades in terms of delivering content.
For some reason, I thought I heard that there was like one and a half groups and one and a half groups combined.
So there's, there's one, do you, so there's one team that, similar to kind of the way Meg described, a special educator helping this section of students in this, in this group remotely, and this, this teacher's helping students in the hybrid model, because that would be a complete caseload for a special educator. So it would be X number of sections of second, of seventh grade English and X number of sections of eighth grade English. But I, although, you know, certainly at the elementary level, sometimes we bring students across grades together for things. I don't think they're planning on mixing them. It would be content delivered that's grade level specific.
So if our math teacher on that team, we teach four classes, separate classes during that day, would teach two separate classes of seventh graders and two separate classes of eighth graders?
Okay.
Instead of four of eighth or four of seventh, or just assign the one grade?
Thank you.
Lindsay, I think you have a question?
Thank you for all of it. The complexity is, every time you present, there's more questions too, right, that come up with how we make all of this work. Just one, a question about the different cohorts, I just want to make sure I understood. Families who have already selected B or C should get an email tomorrow morning with some further, is that right, tomorrow, tomorrow, Thursday?
Tomorrow is Thursday.
Tomorrow is Thursday, yes, tomorrow.
Sad that I had to stop and think about that, but I did.
It's 2020, okay, tomorrow morning with some instruction about whether they're in B or C and a reminder about the time they have to potentially change.
To ask for a switch, correct?
Yeah, it's a little, it's not quite as specific.
It's tricky to figure out where you divide the alphabet.
Yeah, it's not going to be an email sort of separate to you individually, it'll be an email to everyone that will say exactly where the split will be in the alphabet. So you'll be able to know where your last name is, which right now, and again, because people have been changing their mind and assignments have been changing, right now, it's about somewhere in the L's. It's not exactly at the letter break, so it's going to be L, A something will be the last person in Cohort B, the next person in line will be the first student in Cohort C. And so we'll be very clear, based on last name, where that split is, so they'll know if they're in B or C. If you are, you know, A through K, you can be assured you're going to be in Cohort B. And if you're from, you know, M through Z, you can be assured you're in Cohort C. And it's that middle split of exactly where in the L's it's going to split right now, so that we can. And again, you know, we'd like to simplify things, but we literally have to do it down to the seat, because we need to make sure we can commit to that physical distancing happening in classrooms. We can't just add an extra desk into a classroom, because otherwise, that would violate the commitment we've made to the, to the physical distancing within classes.
That makes perfect sense. Thank you for explaining. I also, I believe I heard you say, we're not going to be able to accommodate, for instance, the neighborhood kids who maybe want to try to say, can I, can I switch? But then you also said there'll be a link if you want to make that preference. So in my understanding, we're sort of taking a list, and if, for, if we should happen to need to move, based on some of these other changes?
Yeah, so.
We're willing to hear that preference?
Sure. So what we'll be doing essentially is asking families, that if they've decided, that they've made a choice, or for those who haven't made a choice, we made the choice for them and put them in hybrid, that by Friday afternoon, they'll have a specific email address they can send an email to, and that if they send an email to the address and say, I want to change my assignment, I chose hybrid, but I don't want to be remote or vice versa, if they send us an email to that address, that we'll publish this email tomorrow, by Friday afternoon, we'll make that switch before school starts. That will be, and we'll confirm that for people that the switch has been made. We'll also, with the email, send a link to a Google form, that if you would like to switch your cohort, again, it's very unlikely we'll be able to accommodate that, just because, again, we have to keep the numbers balanced, and frankly, we don't have the bandwidth to be doing a lot of, I mean, the work we have to do is getting school open, and we don't have a lot of bandwidth to be swapping kids back and forth in different schools or between, you know, different cohorts. But if we feel like we need to rebalance because we have a special education need in some case, or we need to, and we need to make a switch, we'd rather switch someone who wants to switch than someone who doesn't. So we'll, we'll keep a list of people who want that preference, and if we have a need to make a change between cohorts B and C, we'd rather go to someone who would like to see that happen. So that's essentially the approach we'll take.
Okay. Can I?
Absolutely.
I'm going to ping pong on a couple of different issues. I'm very happy to hear that we're going to have so many of our educators from the district supporting the special education needs of our young people and monitoring that, even if delivered by others, such as on the tech platform. I think it's a very important group, even if they're not in A, whether they're in B or C or D, that they're, we're making sure they're getting their needs met, as we're obviously required to, but it's certainly part of our value system. I guess I'm hoping, recognizing the incredible fluidity of numbers that you're seeing changes today, in the moment, when, do we think, this is now a pin over to the finances, when we maybe post Friday, and we're sort of at least a little locked in for a while, will we have a sense of what some of the costs are of things like edgenuity, the Middlebury program? I mean, those are, I was doing a little math in my head as you were talking about those numbers, and, and then, and then do we know if we can use things like CARES Act funding to cover some of the costs of the, be the remote options? Those are obviously above and beyond what we had ever planned for.
Right. I mean, we're talking about very large numbers. I mean, you're talking about if just for the, if we go with the sort of asynchronous level program and we're going to hire people to help shepherd students through that, you know, you're probably talking minimum of several hundred thousand dollars in new staffing costs for folks who would do that work, and licensed teachers who would essentially be serving as long-term substitutes, who we would train to be working with students to work in that Cohort D model. If you're talking about purchasing the sort of the teacher through the third party, I think you're looking at upwards of a million dollars for the year to serve 300 and something students. And I'm not sure we have a million dollars to do that, frankly. And I'm not sure we have several hundred thousand dollars, but we're going to have to make some decisions to make things work, because we have an obligation to do things. You know, there are, again, you know, trying to work with some of the information that was coming from the state relative to the state contract with some of these people and vetting them. We believe it was important to vet them carefully, and right now, edgenuity seems to be the company that would match our needs the best and be the most cost-effective. But we're talking about, you know, a really incredibly challenging dynamic around what we can afford to do and what we must do. And if we must do something similar to if we have a situation where we've all talked budgetarily about situations where sometimes we have unpredictable costs relative to special education, so, you know, how do we, if we go beyond what we budgeted, you know, we have some cushion somewhere, how do we manage that in the course of a year if we have an unanticipated cost? We're dealing with that to a very extreme degree right now. So that is going to take some, I think, when we report back to you next week, we will have some more specifics for you around what we believe is doable, what the right pathway is, and what's affordable, given the resources we have. The CARES Act funding could be a source to help us with some things, but again, most, the vast majority of those dollars only exist through the end of December. And services that would last beyond that, we may not, you know, certain things you can purchase, materials, that's fine, but if you're talking about service, you really can't purchase services after December 30th. So that's another conundrum that we're working through. And I wish I had a simple, easy answer for that, but I don't.
I think it's appropriate for the community to know the magnitude of what we're talking about here, that it's, in addition to the complexity, the cost magnitude of what it's going to take. And I think, I think I understand, but I'm maybe going to repeat just to, for those who are listening, because we talk a lot about efficiencies and maybe what that means, the reason why we would need to hire more teachers, even if we were using some other platforms, is because our teachers who are staying in the classroom, for the 80-odd percent of the high school that want to be in the classroom, if you have a classroom of 18 students throughout the day, it's lower than we usually have. You don't also have the capacity to monitor, it's a smaller class than you used to also monitor the remote learners. And so that efficiency of a few less students in every class all the time actually is a large cohort of people, and therefore, we would need to hire more teachers in order to, am I capturing that correctly for those listening?
That's a great, yes, that's a good summary, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
No, thank you, Lindsay, that was great.
John?
I'd like to thank everybody for the update and all the work that you've put into this. There's a lot of information here, and I'd like to take a step back to the beginning, Dr. Sawyer, with the data that you share over the last couple of weeks, I'd like to see this be kind of the lead for every week, because I think the first four slides are really critical to kind of grounding us all in reality of what's happening in Shrewsbury, in our surrounding towns, and in our state, because health and safety is really a key driver to, you know, just, you know, the path forward, I think. I'm happy to see that we're going to have, you know, a lot of Shrewsbury educators through K through 8. I understand the complexities around the high school, for sure, and I'm just thinking about this, 350 or so students that are all remote, that, you know, some of which they sophomore through, seniors have used Schoology up until now. Just a question, I'm assuming like all of that work, all of the, all of the curriculum would be housed on edgenuity, right, and not Schoology? Or would there be some synergy between the two?
So that's a question that I have to explore with my friend, because he speaks integration, and they have clever, so I don't, I think what that would mean is that there would be a link within Schoology that would bring you directly to the edgenuity platform. So kids wouldn't, am I right about that? They wouldn't have to learn a new way of logging into their courses, and actually, that might make it easier to connect them in other ways, to things like advisories and class meetings, because they'd get those announcements that everybody at Shrewsbury High School gets through Schoology, but they'd have this extra little button that takes them to their coursework, based on what that would be.
Okay, so there'd be some, like a starting point in Schoology that would take them to edgenuity?
That would be the hope, yeah.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Lindsay, thanks for asking the question that you did about the financial piece of this, because that was one of my concerns, you know. We know how tight the budget is, we know what we've already asked our staff to do and sacrifice, so, you know, looking
we know how tight the budget is, we know what we've already, um, asked our staff to do and sacrifice, so, you know, looking forward, it's a little scary, um, knowing that we could have this other big financial need, and how are we going to fill that? Um, so I think the, the public needs to be aware that everything's being done, but this is such an, uh, unknown and uncharted course that we're on, I think like many employers, like we're all learning how to do things differently, but there is a cost that's associated with that, and this, um, community is going to, we're going to have to grapple with that piece as well. Um, so thank you for providing that answer.
You're welcome, you know from the time we presented the plan that we were waiting for information about the state bidding process and what we were going to, when we were going to hear about that rate, and that was released kind of in early August, and then the first webinar to really hear the details about what these pricing things would look like were followed to that, so the in-depth webinar about what the student experience would look like was last Friday. So I just want to give you a sense of like, when you hear big money and then you hear surprise, I want you to know that, uh, you know, the due diligence piece has been really around networking with what does the student experience look like, because those cohort D students are our students, and we want them to have a really rich experience. If it can't be with our Shrewsbury educators, we, we want it to be powerful, particularly knowing that we have juniors and seniors in that mix, and that's really hard, it's really hard to balance those two things.
And I want to underscore what you said about that the timeframe for this has been incredibly short. I don't, I mean, we're pretty close to this, so we're hearing it, I don't know if, you know, the public sometimes really understands this is a huge project that's being done with so many moving pieces for children's education that has to be done right, cost-effective as we can, um, but it's being done in, at this pace is just crazy, and things are changing as you've moved through it, so thank you to everyone involved, who, you know, spoke tonight and all the rest of the staff that's been involved, it has been a Herculean amount of work in a very short amount of time. Um, I mean, again, we see it, but it's, it's, it's really tough for you guys to be doing this, you're working twenty-four seven, trying to get this done, and school is opening soon, and we're going to do the best we can, but there are some unknowns, and there are some things we're going to learn as we go, but thank you for everything you're doing, it's, it's, um, it's tremendous amount of work, I, I just, I can't even get over how much all of you are doing, and the, the stress that you are all under to make sure that the kids in this district get what they need, so thank you very much for that, and we'll keep plodding along and move forward with it, so thank you. Anything further, Dr. Sawyer?
No, thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, we are going to talk about a topic that came up at our meeting last week, which was a, um, recommendation to possibly allow the children of staff who live in district to attend more in-person sessions. Um, and part of that came up due to the potential staffing challenge, and Dr. Sawyer mentioned that again this evening, um, and he advised that one way to alleviate this pressure would be to allow Shrewsbury Public School staff whose children go to school in Shrewsbury to attend school more frequently in person. Uh, Dr. Sawyer advised that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, Commissioner Jeff Riley had suggested and supported this type of approach for districts. The committee discussed this last week, and we felt that we needed more information and more data, and we also wanted to hear from the public as well as from staff, what their thoughts were, and we've gone through that process, and Dr. Sawyer will provide us with an update.
Thank you, Ms. Fritz. Um, so yes, last week I did make this proposal that would have authorized, uh, children of, of Shrewsbury Public School staff who attend just grades kindergarten through grade six, um, or another level if there was a student who may have had a disability, um, to be provided with that opportunity, um, and again, this is really related to a very significant staffing problem that we're facing relative to workforce stability, uh, that is related to the difficulties that, uh, staff are having, uh, finding childcare under the circumstances, many daycares have cut their capacity in half due to the COVID regulations, uh, staff who had daycare lined up, uh, prior to that, uh, ended up sometimes being, uh, knocked off waiting lists or knocked off of a, a, a spot in, in a daycare situation. And obviously, you know, more recent developments where some other local school districts uh, have decided to go all remote for a period of time, and so those students are home, you know, all the time, uh, unlike a situation where they would have been in school at least for part of the week and so forth. Um, so it's a really difficult situation for our staff, and like any organization, uh, we're trying to figure out, making sure that we have adequate staffing to do the, the, deliver what we need to deliver, uh, to our constituents. Uh, you know, I, I appreciate the request for more information, uh, and at the time, uh, I'm sure to say that, you know, since this, since last week, uh, we did poll our staff, and based on that survey, um, there were forty-seven students that were identified that might take advantage of this, uh, uh, really across the grade levels, K through six, uh, not, not in particular, uh, maybe a little more of a volume at Sherwood in terms of the requests, but, uh, pretty well spread across K through six and across the different schools that we have K through six. Um, however, I think last week I was probably, uh, a bit, I was, a bit too optimistic uh, about the estimation of how many seats we might have available uh, for students to, to double up essentially in both cohort, uh, to, to attend both on Monday and Tuesday as well as on, uh, Thursday and Friday. Uh, in, in your memo that you have, uh, in your packet, um, I do list some of the information from the Department of Education, because there's, there's very clear expectations from the state level uh, that we are serving our students with complex and significant needs first, in terms of prioritizing uh, more in-school attendance, uh, if you're in a hybrid model. Uh, so at the same time that we were surveying our staff, uh, we also have been, as you heard from the previous report, uh, putting together how we're going to balance out class sections and cohorts B and C, um, the students from cohort A who have already been invited based on their very significant, complex needs, um, and then the work that Meg Belcito's team has been doing, as well as looking at our English language learning uh, department under Kathy Lang Madden, um, as well as principals looking at, uh, some of the students who fit criteria, there's some that may not be listed here, but the state has also been clear, kids who may have struggled, uh, last year, there may be, there may be a student doesn't have an official IEP, but they may have some circumstances that cause them to be particularly at risk, um, so our principals are looking at that as well. Uh, and, you know, at this point, just in the students with IEPs alone, uh, who would be sort of this next group to meet criteria, uh, to be given the opportunity to attend more in-person, um, is at least seventy students at this point. That's not counting the number of students we might need to provide, who might be at the beginning stages of being an English language learner, uh, or again, some of these other pieces, it's mentioned in the state guidance about students who might be in foster care, for example. Um, and we're getting new enrollments, of course, as we go, we tend to get a fair amount of new enrollments just before the school year starts, and we have to evaluate those students as well. Um, so, you know, in looking at this, um, it became, uh, clear to me uh, that, uh, the, uh, the seats available, um, and, and that's the other piece, in terms of just with the physical spacing, um, you know, schools were sort of finalizing this week, how many physical seats do we have available in each classroom uh, where we will be able to remain within the six-foot physical distancing limit? Um, and most, you know, some classrooms in different schools are different square footage, and we can fit maybe a couple more in some and fewer in another. Um, and so working all those things together is sort of one big math problem. Um, it became clear, uh, to me that the number of seats available, uh, that there is not going to be sufficient space, uh, at this point in time, um, to accommodate, uh, children of Shrewsbury Public School staff, um, to assist them, you know, with, with the situation in terms of having students in school more frequently. Uh, I don't see this becoming an option, at least during the initial phase of the school year. Um, and so, again, while I was optimistic uh, last week of being able to provide some of those accommodations, unfortunately I was wrong. Uh, and I, I feel badly, um, about, uh, you know, some staff maybe getting their hopes up, that they might be able to solve their dilemma, um, and I feel badly that some of those staff may be in a position uh, where they may be choosing to exercise their, um, the, the possibility under the FFCRA, under the CARES Act, that they could take a childcare leave this fall, because that's going to affect, you know, a large number of students who they would otherwise have been teaching, and is going to cause us to try to backfill positions where we're already scrambling, um, to try to fill the positions that we need to fill for the, for the school year. Uh, and I, again, it certainly, uh, was not my intent to, uh, give anyone false hope, um, and I hope that it's perceived by our staff that it was an effort uh, to try to solve this dilemma for them, uh, in terms of, uh, you know, being, uh, helping to accommodate, uh, our staff, just as any organization wants to try to accommodate their staff if they can. Um, and then, uh, secondly, uh, to accommodate the needs of a large number of students, uh, you know, who, who, so for our families in Shrewsbury who could be affected if we're not able to staff um, the, a student's classroom, uh, or support position, or whatever it might be, uh, with the person who otherwise would have been there because they're not able to come to work because of childcare issues. Um, so we're trying to solve a couple of problems, I certainly am aware uh, that there are, uh, people who would disagree with that approach and have perceptions around fairness, uh, in terms of what a teacher might have access to versus, uh, another member with a child, uh, just in a general sense, uh, and I certainly recognize that, and, and like many of the things we're dealing with right now, uh, there aren't easy answers, and there are things where there's not a clear-cut uh, way to do it that's going to satisfy everyone, uh, so I appreciate the feedback, I know the school committee had some feedback along those lines, um, as, as did I as well. But I do stand by my intent of, you know, the original proposal, um, as a matter of pragmatism, uh, to try to get things rolling and have as much of the staffing on board as we can. Um, and like any organization, I do think it behooves us to find ways to try to meet our employees' needs where we can. Uh, and I do want to say that we're continuing to, I've asked actually Ms. Isaacson, uh, to, to try to look at some different options, we, we have been doing that. Uh, I was, uh, it was, it was good to hear to, on today's conference call with Commissioner Riley, that, uh, the uh, early education, EEC, what's EEC stand for?
Early Education and Care.
And Care, that's right. That, that, so, the EEC, which is a state agency that licenses childcare, is actually looking, uh, to provide more options for community-based childcare and trying to um, make, uh, right now the regulations as they should be are very strict about being, you know, would provide childcare, but perhaps allowing, uh, whether it's a school district who might have had a before and after-school program, uh, or another, you know, community-based group, uh, that might be able to provide something like that, to actually be able to get uh, an, an opportunity to be licensed, uh, so that they could provide childcare during the school day, for example, because the state's realizing this is a real conundrum for a lot of educators um, and school staff across, across the Commonwealth. Um, so we're going to continue to see if there's other opportunities and options that we can help our staff. Um, and, uh, in the meantime, um, at this point, uh, you know, my, my sense is that, uh, you know, given that it's not a, a possibility based on the other needs we have to fill, uh, to have students who need more in-school time, uh, I am no longer asking the school committee, uh, to take any action on the matter. Um, so that is the update I have for you this evening, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that the committee has.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer, any questions or comments? Lindsay.
I just really want to thank you, Dr. Sawyer, this is, we know it's been a challenging issue, I think we've gotten more comments on this issue, school committee members, than any other issue, and there are many right now that we're, we're dealing with, so there's, um, really s- strong feelings and the desire to support our staff clearly is out there, and the desire amongst some parents to see that, uh, if more, um, services are provided to kids, that other essential workers are also an important part of our, of our community, so re- recognizing all of that. I think fundamentally what, what, given the numbers, what we're really doing though is saying that, that we are prioritizing students by student need, and, and that's, that's at the center of this, and the student need is driving that actually we need more seats for those, for those young people, so I appreciate it, I think trying to get out and move as quickly as we can as decisions are changing constantly, trying to move this forward, that last week made, made sense in the, in the moment, but given where we are now with the numbers, it's, um, um, while I know there'll be teachers who are disappointed, and it will impact our staffing, and that is terrible, as a parent myself who's trying to figure out childcare, I, I deeply understand that. Um, uh, but I, but I do know, we also got comments from parents who have young people with IEPs who were saying, I think my kid could, could and should get some more services, and how does that fit in the mix, and so now we know there are more of those on the list that we, that we need to tend to, so I appreciate the conundrum you were in, and I think, I think, um, this is the right way for us to move forward.
Lindsay, Jason.
I'm certainly disappointed with this turn of events, um, when we received the proposal last week, uh, I did go on record as saying that I favored the measure that was brought before us. Uh, we had already begun to receive some feedback, and certainly I understand that this is a very controversial topic, and there are very strong feelings on both sides. Uh, and since our meeting last week, I, I, we've received certainly a large volume of additional feedback, all of which I've read and reflected on, uh, and I did find that my mind was unchanged on this, I did find myself still supportive uh, of, of offering this to our staff, and certainly what I heard uh, was that there is a community-wide, if not a statewide and a national childcare issue that this pandemic has really brought to the forefront and exacerbated. And we have a lot of families who are in very difficult situations dealing with choices between being there for their children and maintaining employment, which I'm sure many of them didn't imagine having to make before, and certainly, um, I personally feel that we need a state and/or federal solution to address a lack of childcare, but I did view this as something that would have been nice for us to be able to do for our staff, uh, I certainly understand that logistics uh, are not going to make that possible, uh, but it is unfortunate that logistics will take this off the table, in my view.
Thank you, Jason. John.
It is my perspective, uh, I mean, first off, I want to thank everybody for, for emailing us, uh, and writing to us, I do agree, I think this, we had more, more emails on this topic than we did, uh, on the models that we ended up voting on the weeks leading up to that vote. Um, and I am glad that we delayed it a week, because I think we needed to hear more from, you know, the public, from residents, from teachers, and I really appreciate, uh, the feedback on that. Uh, I mean, this is, this is about trying to mitigate the potential for staffing issues, and you have to throw everything on the table. And with things changing by the hour, you know, unfortunately, you know, this, this, you know, this option didn't work out, but I think it's important to note that, uh, you know, this is not normal circumstances, and we're trying to evaluate whatever's available to us to, to look at to mitigate what could potentially be a, a shortage, so I appreciate uh, the effort that, uh, Dr. Sawyer put into thinking through what options are available, because otherwise we wouldn't have had, uh, you know, this in front of us to, to think about over the last week, so.
Um, I also think, um, as an employer, we need to make sure we have enough staff to do the, the job, and we need to make sure that we have enough teachers in our district to educate all the students. And it's very understandable, and myself, as a working parent in a two-working family, childcare is a huge concern for our staff, as well as all of our fam- our working families in the district, and as my colleagues have mentioned, we probably had more comments on this than we have seen on any other issue. And, um, concerns with equity, concerns with students who have IEPs, who parents are feeling need to be in that, you know, and prioritize for their services, as well as staff, I mean, the staff is trying to juggle maybe two teachers who are working in different districts, so there's a lot of emotion behind this, and there's a lot of, um, anxiety, and that's very understandable. I want to thank you, Dr. Sawyer, for bringing it forward last week, because I think it was a well-intentioned, um, piece of information that we really needed to consider when we were looking at staffing, and, um, I'm glad we waited and received some more data, because if we had voted before we had that, we may not have been able to actually follow through with it, and then we would have had to have staff maybe change the plan, so I, I think the, the wait was worth, worth it, it was, made me feel like I was making a better decision, and, um, I think it's important for the people who are watching and listening that, you know, we have been looking for ways to help staff. Um, the district has worked with the Y to open some slots there for staff who may want to consider that as an option, I mean, looking at other, maybe in district as we move forward, so you've been working and trying to, to get as much as you can for our staff, and it's unfortunate this is not going to work out, but we have to keep thinking of what is, what else is out there, and how can we mo- you know, maybe work with this going forward, so again, I'm disappointed that we can't help, but I'm glad we didn't make a promise that we weren't, we weren't going to be able to for, follow through on after we get more data, so thank you. Anything further on this? Nope. Thank, thank you, Dr. Sawyer. Okay, next, we are going to talk about the revised tuition rates, uh, for extended school care. At our meeting last week, Director of Extended Learning Karen Isaacson discussed the pandemic's impact on the extended school care program in terms of enrollment and budget, and we had a proposed, um, a proposal for raising tuition for full-fee families as part of an overall recommendation to enable this program to continue. Ms. Isaacson is here, do we have some slides tonight as well?
Just a, a single sheet, uh, that was, I think, shared with you later, uh, this afternoon. Again, to give a little perspective, uh, back in May when we registered, I had six hundred and sixty-one individual students registered. Um, since then, two hundred and sixty-one students have chosen the remote learning option. Another forty-four families have come forward and said, we chose hybrid, but we're withdrawing from extended day for a different reason, be it, um, they're working from home, or they're concerned about spread. Um, after our last meeting, I sent an email directly to all extended-day families, even those who had chosen the remote option for learning to say, you know, here's what I presented to the school committee, encouraging them to email you directly, and then I built a quick survey that simply said, if rates were raised to this level, yes, I would come, no, I would not come, or no, I'm not coming for a different reason. Um, so, scroll up a little bit, Brian, you'll see this pie chart. I had, we had a hundred people respond, it's really split almost perfectly into three sections of who would withdraw, so the, the red is, that's, you know, So the, the red is, that's, you know, 36% right there, red saying, if we raise rates, we will not come. And that yellowish color is people who are withdrawing for a different reason, and the blue, 35% of this 100 responses, said, yes, I would continue to come. I know emails that I got personally, and the comments in this little survey were diverse. I mean, there were certainly a lot of people saying, while I understand the reason for this increase, it personally affects me in a way that I would withdraw, or if I was coming, I'd pay it, but I'm not coming for a different reason. So, you know, we're, I, I have a few big concerns about where we go forward from this point. If we were to approve this tuition increase tonight, I would need to make a deadline. I'm proposing of September 11th, that is a make or break. We're, we're going or we're not going, because even with a proposed increase, there's not a guarantee that we can pull this off, really. A lot is dependent on what the enrollment numbers actually are. You know, that pie chart showed one-third of the 100 not coming. What happens to all the other people who haven't responded to that survey? Is that another third who aren't coming? As we've all said tonight, things are changing hourly. They're changing for families, they're changing for us. Due to the uncertainty of the future of this program, not only enrollment-wise, but knowing that if schools had to close, our program would stop. I've had long-term key staff members, including group leaders, who have accepted childcare-specific, child-specific aid positions in the district because they cannot afford to lose their health care, their retirement, their, they've been here 20 years, they might have all this accrued sick time. Their fear that we could close and they would lose their job has kind of put them between a rock and a hard place. And I, you know, so while I would regret to lose them for this year, I also feel like it is in the long-term best interest of extended day if they stay in the district. I would, I would rather they move to a different district position for a year than to suddenly be out of work, which would make it a lot harder to rebuild extended day. So I do have a concern about how many employees will, you know, continue to want to work, and then just what will happen to enrollment once this, you know, decision is publicized if we were to go forward. So, you know, if you vote tonight that, yes, we're going to try this, we're going to increase this rate, I would immediately ask all of my families for a decision. It will help that once, they will know their cohort, you know, by tomorrow. So I'm essentially giving them a link to their original registration form that will say, these are my two days, or I'm withdrawing. I would need a deadline from them. And then I will simultaneously be going to the waitlist to say, we've got openings at this rate, are you interested? And there's a little balance there, because if people wait till the 11th to tell me if they're leaving, I don't want to over-enroll from the waitlist. So it'll be a dance of offering spots, and knowing, too, that the number of seats in our, each building is limited. You know, the, the Patton Cafegymatorium is going to, I think, literally, we counted 28 seats, based on how far apart everybody has to sit. That's a significant decrease in what we've had over there, so I may not be able to offer anyone at Patton off the waitlist. So it is a very razor-fine margin on, is this a viable program or not? We could start, and it's looking great for a month, and then if families withdraw, we're back in the red and would have to pull the plug. So I, I get very conflicted between, we have families who really need this, and I want to provide this, because we just talked about how critical childcare is, versus I want to provide some stability for families who are not sitting here saying, well, at any minute, I might lose my childcare, or staff feeling at any minute, I might lose my job. So it's been, you know, a, a lot of thought around how we can make this work, and, you know, I'm, I'm absolutely ready to do whatever, whatever it takes, but I just want to be really clear of some of the challenges we're facing if we were to go forward. So are there questions from you?
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments? John.
Yeah, I mean, I've obviously reviewed a lot of the, the emails, all of the emails that we got on this topic. Obviously, critical service, but it's hard to offer the service at a loss of $20,000 a month. My thoughts are, you know, because it's critical, and because we've heard pretty much, you know, from many of these emails, saying we need this service, and, you know, we're okay with the, the increase. I am, I am in favor of, of the increase.
Thank you. Jason.
I'll echo what Mr. Wensky said. I, I mentioned last week, I am, you know, disturbed certainly by this turn of events. It's very unfortunate that we're in a position where this is necessary to maintain the program, but the reality is what it is. I would rather not lose the program, and I do recognize that despite the price increase, this is still potentially a more affordable option than other options available to families. So loathe as I am to raise this fee, especially to this degree, unfortunately, our Shrewsbury situation, raising fees to maintain a service is old hat, and it's something we've had to do many times before, and tonight, I feel we'll have to do it again.
Lindsay.
I can ask one question. The survey responses, so we listed updated enrollment by students, but survey responses, I'm guessing, are by family? And so do we, do we have a lot of families with multiple children in, in programs? Or I'm wondering if, actually, we have a little more information than we think we do. If we had 100 families responding, and maybe some of them had, had, had a couple kids, but I, but I really don't know how you're, how the program breaks out, given the different schools and the waitlist and all of that.
Right. I can, oh, no, it doesn't change. Because they didn't ask for specifics, it turns out their name or number of children, I mean, probably historically, we might have, oh, 30 to 40% of families have multiple students.
So I think, I appreciate that we're, we're, it's evolving, as, as all things are that we talk about here. And I, given the feedback that we got from the community, that while there were many who said that if you raise these rates, I can't, I can't stay, and I certainly understand that, those who said that they, they needed it, and if we raise rates, we would stay in the program because we need this program, and many of whom also expressed that they were essential workers, and, and so I think it's important that we try, and I appreciate the idea of, we need a deadline, though, to say if we're not, if this can't, a no-go date, because school starts the following Mon, Tuesday.
Right. And this is the assumption that we start October 5th, which we had already discussed.
Thank you for that reminder. We won't start until October 5th in any event. That's a good thing to remind families. Okay. But I'm cer- certainly I'm supportive, albeit unfortunately, as has been mentioned, no one, no one wants to see these rates go up to the, to where you are at.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Isaacson. I think this is a program that we want to sustain. It's vital to the community and working families to have a safe before and after-school program that, you know, we unfortunately are most likely going to have to raise rates. It'll bring more to a market rate, we were a little below, but we did receive a lot of information from parents, and I agree with Lindsay, for those families who can't afford it, it's, we feel bad about that, that's, because they need this, this childcare. But in order to sustain the overall program, I think we are going to have to raise the rates, and I thank you for dealing with another complex, convoluted start to this program as well. But thank you for working with us and asking parents to give us feedback, because it's always helpful for that.
Right. Just one second. Ms. Malone, I, we didn't really talk about the staffing piece of this. Is that something we want to discuss of what's happening in this next month? I mean, just an awareness that, that there's a period of time where my employees are not working, and... Yeah. Have the employees heard that directly from you? It has been a discussion of what, what the next steps are. Everyone is aware that they are not working, they would report back to work October, August 31st, and we're not open until October 5th, so everyone is aware of that time, that timeframe. So there is a period of where people are not working, some will be able to continue working, and some, they're just, looking at those numbers, are not going to be enough positions for them. So that's something that Barb and I are communicating to employees as well, just keeping that as part of the equation, that...
Right. And I think, I mean, it's a self-funding, the revenue that comes in has to fund the full program, and as John said, we can't, we could never operate with that type of a loss every month. It just isn't feasible in any way, shape, or form, so I do, I agree with it, because I do think it's, we have to keep this program going just for our community. Dr. Sawyer, any comments or questions?
Of course, I want to thank Ms. Isaacson for the very thorough and professional job she is doing to try to manage this situation. Again, I also want to just send my wishes to our staff who are being affected by this, not all of whom will be able to continue with the job with our extended school care. I'm pleased to hear that there are many who are finding other positions in the district as paraprofessionals, because I concur with Ms. Isaacson, that would want to keep them here working at Shrewsbury Public Schools, so that if, it shouldn't be if, when extended school care reopens, hopefully in the not-too-distant future, they'll be able to reestablish themselves there, and in the meantime, maintain the benefits that they've earned over their many years of excellent service to us. I do recommend that you authorize the school district to increase the tuition by 60% over the original FY21 rates, to maintain the tuition for families who qualify for free reduced lunch at the original FY21 rates, to adjust the program to be, you know, on the two-day schedule, Mondays and Tuesdays, or Thursdays and Fridays, or, you know, two days for, four days for the program. And then, again, as Ms. Isaacson said, clearly, if there's not sufficient enrollment, or there's not sufficient staffing, that I would be authorized to suspend the operations of the program until such time that the circumstances allow it to resume. So that's in the memo that I provided to you in your packet, and I think it's certainly worth it, especially the families that are depending on this for childcare, that we, we give it a try, see if we can make the numbers work, and we'll know shortly after the deadline in September, that whether we're going to be able to make that happen or not. So, but I would ask that the school committee approve that this evening.
Thank you. Okay, may I have a motion that the school committee vote to approve the adjustments to the extended school care tuition rates in programming, as illustrated in the enclosed superintendent's recommendation memo?
Some.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, under new business, on August 11th of this year, the Board of Selectmen established a diversity, equity, and inclusion task force to address these issues in the community. The task force will be comprised of an intentionally diverse cohort of Shrewsbury residents, representing a cross-section of the population and numbering no more than 30 individuals. The school committee has been invited to appoint one designated to serve as part of the membership of this newly-formed task force, and I sent an email out with this letter to the committee, and Ms. Heffernan and Mr. Pallas have both expressed interest in serving on the committee. Mr. Pallas.
I'd like to nominate Ms. Heffernan to represent the committee during this work.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, okay. May I have a motion that the committee vote to appoint Lindsay Heffernan to serve as the school committee's delegate to the town of Shrewsbury's Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Task Force?
Some.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Lindsay, for serving on that. Okay, we do need to go into executive session this evening for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant in aid requirements, Purpose 7, Open Meeting Law, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 22FG, for the purpose of reviewing, approving, and/or releasing executive session minutes, and B, for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if in an open me, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect of the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares, Purpose 3, the Shrewsbury Education Association, Unit A; Shrewsbury Education Association, Unit B; the Shrewsbury Paraprofessional Association, and/or the Shrewsbury Cafeteria Workers, where deliberation in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and we will return to open session only for the purpose of journey for the evening. May I have a motion that we adjourn to executive session?
Some.
Second.
Roll call vote is required. Ms. Heffernan?
Aye.
Mr. Pallas?
Aye.
Dr. McGee?
Aye.
Mr. Wensky?
Aye.
Myself?
Aye.
Thank you and good night.